Commissioners, are we ready to start? Please let me welcome everyone to a regular scheduled meeting Tuesday, August 15th, 2023, of the City of Morro Bay Planning Commission. We are at Veterans Memorial Building, and we're so glad to have you all with us here in person and on the Zoom call as well as TV. My name is Bill Rochan. I'm your chairperson, and I'd like to introduce the Planning Commission. If I could start with Vice Chairperson Mike Rodriguez.
Hello.
Commissioner Joseph Ingraffia, Commissioner Asia King, and Commissioner Eric Meyer. We're very happy to be here tonight and happy you came to join us. And with that, I've established a quorum, and I'll call the meeting to order. And if we could have a moment of silence. And Mike, you had a special recognition?
Yes, I'd like to recognize the mayor of Paso Robles, Steve Martin, who unexpectedly passed away. But I went to the website, and Steve served on the council previously from 1987 to 1996. He served as mayor in Paso Robles from 1988 to 1990, and he was so good serving his community, they brought him back in 2014 and has served as mayor since. He passed away yesterday. So I'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Martin.
Thank you. If we could all stand and pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, do we have any announcements before we begin? Hearing none. This is a point for public comment. Anybody who would like to speak at the beginning of the meeting on issues not covered on the agenda or can't stay with us, we'd like to welcome you and give you three minutes. Glenn, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for hearing me. I have some thanks to you as the President of the Historical Society of Morro Bay. You have been encouraging people to pay attention to our historical roots and our historic environment. You've gone so far as to put the Historic Preservation Ordinance on your agenda and urged it to be part of the city's goals. Thank you. That's why I'm here. I have heard that there will be a joint session of this body and the council on September 26th where the Historic Preservation Ordinance may be discussed, at least a little bit. So I want to urge you to promote that. We have been waiting for this item to become part of your actual discussions toward a conclusion for over two years now. Other things have come up. We've had to deal with zoning in the final plan, and we had to deal with this and that and the other thing. But in the meantime, we're watching our buildings go away, and we have no tools to deal with that, to even give an owner on a voluntary basis a way to participate in a program that would help to preserve our built environment and our history, which is embedded in those things. So I hope that in this discussion opening up on the 26th that we can begin that process and actually do it. So in that vein, from the adopted general plan, this is in the Conservation Section. Goal C2, cultural and historic resources are identified for protection and showcased as a vital part of Morro Bay history. Implementation action number one, become a certified local government by developing a Historic Preservation Ordinance, establishing a Historic Preservation Committee, and maintaining a system to regularly update cultural resources. We have placed a draft of a Historic Preservation Ordinance on your table. We know that you're going to have a lot of work to do on it, that there may be amendments. We're hoping that having something to edit rather than write from scratch makes it easier for you, but I think we need to get started. We're seeing buildings disappear every other week, and we need to start fixing that. So, thank you.
So Glenn, before you sit down, Scott, do you have any updates on the schedule relative to the Preservation Ordinance?
It is one of our items on the goals. It's just that we have limited staff to work on it, so right now we kind of got our plates full. We need to get the zoning code pushed off of our plate. We thought we had done that in November of last year, and unfortunately it came back. So we're almost, we're getting ready to schedule, you're going to start having hearings on the zoning code, our second meeting in September, and you'll maybe have one, your first meeting in October, and hopefully then you're able to move that forward. And so we can then go to City Council and have City Council approve it and move it forward, and that'll create capacity for us to work on some other things like the historical ordinance.
So this commission does support what Glenn is here to talk about. Can you give us a tentative date, if not tonight, at the next meeting? And so we have something to work towards? And that way we can all at least be on the same page? Is that a reasonable request?
For like when we would bring it for the first discussion?
The initiating of the work, and are we going to have a consultant, or what's the strategy? How are we going to do it? Where's the money coming from? That kind of stuff.
Okay.
And so if you could give us a date, that would be great.
Thank you, Bill. And I would just say that if there's anything that we can do, since we're identified in the general plan as one of your potential community partners, ask, because we're ready to help.
Yeah. Well, it's a big help having you here so we keep it all, you know, current. Thank you. Others who would like to speak?
My name is Alice Kolb. I serve also on the Historic Society's Board, and I would like to second our concern about some of our historic landmarks here. We don't really have any way of preserving or protecting them right now, and it's part of what makes Morro Bay unique and interesting. And I think that moving forward on having this kind of an ordinance would really be of a benefit to the entire community. Thank you.
Alice, thank you very much. No one in the audience? Let's see, Ray? Anyone in the queue?
There's nobody in the queue with hands raised.
Thank you very much. Then let's, I will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. Scott, is there anything we're voting on here? I don't think so.
Sorry. I think we just have the, yeah, we just have the advanced planning list. That's a receiving file. Unless there's questions.
Any comments, Commissioners? Hearing none. We'll move to public hearing. B1, case number, Plan Morro Bay Zoning Code Amendment/ Objective Design Standards. This is being continued from May 16th, June 6th, and July 18th. With that, Nancy, can I welcome you and your consultants?
Yes, and maybe, who's controlling who's on Zoom? If Kimmy is here, or do you just want me?
AGP, we could see if, is Kimmy in on the Zoom feed? AGP?
Yes, Kimmy is with her hand raised.
Yeah, that'd be great if you unmuted her, so she can hopefully help us out with the presentation.
Oops, one second. Allowed to talk. Oh, one second, sorry. There we go.
Hi, it looks like the audio should be working. I don't know if I have the ability to show my screen.
Okay. I mean, I-
Let me, oh. Can't show your screen, just give me one moment.
Nancy, do you have an idea how long the presentation might be?
Kimmy, share her screen. We're just going to see if we can actually see it. Last time we tried this, it wasn't really legible.
While you're waiting, Mr. Chair, as a point of order, you did not actually take a vote on the consent agenda?
On the what?
Consent agenda.
That was receiving file.
No vote was needed. It's just a receive and file consent agenda.
When there's actual minutes attached, then that's when you need to take a vote.
Right. There's no need, there's no minutes this period. Yeah, thank you, though.
Okay, so it looks like maybe that wasn't going to work, so we'll put the presentation up here.
Okay.
And-
Randy, Kimmy, welcome. Nice to see you again. This is the last time we get to see you, maybe.
Thank you. I hesitate to say we're looking forward to that.
All right, should I just give it? Kimmy seems-
So, yeah, I mean, either, I think, Nancy, you can give it, or if you want, you could just change the slides for Kimmy. Either way, I don't care. Both work. All right.
I'm fine with either.
I'm going to work that.
Is it not changing?
Okay, well, I guess I'm going to do it. Today's agenda, we're just going to do an overview, recap of the previous hearings, the May-May 16th one, the June, and the July. Overview is the new state laws, requires streamlining ministerial process for qualifying multi-unit residential and mixed-use projects. To comply, the city needs to adopt objective design standards that would apply to these projects. Subjective regulations may not be part of the approval process or used to deny a project. Hearing recap, the public hearing held and comments received at all three hearings, the discussion covered the following: clarified when the standards apply, multi-family mixed-use projects made eligible by state housing law, clarified that public notification and environmental review must follow existing requirements, the application process for state-eligible projects, most of which require a ministerial process, and design standards appropriate for Morro Bay. Planning Commission submitted recommendations for the document via a combination of individually written correspondence as well as during the public hearing. And the agenda packet includes revised objective design standards draft, revised draft with redline changes, and a memorandum documenting each PC recommended change and how they were And the staff recommendation continues to be, complete review of objective design standards and forward all documented revisions to City Council with a recommendation to approve the document. That's it.
Okay. Commissioners, let's see, I want to see how we want to go through this. First, do we have any questions for Nancy, Randy, or Kimmy? No questions? What's happening? Should we do public comment first? All right. So again, we'll open public comment on this now that we've had the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Terry Simons, resident of Morro Bay. As I've spoken before on this issue, one of my primary concerns is that while these are objective standards intended to comply with state law, I would hope that the traditional avenues of subjective review by a body qualified to make such a subjective review will continue to be an option for an applicant. I am concerned that the creation of an objective approach with a quote-unquote checklist approach to whether projects qualify for that review will tend to steer those projects in a way that may preclude other options, other tools in the design toolbox. And I would really like to see language to that effect in a preamble or something, and it may well be there. It's implied in state law, but I don't want to have to have a state law argument every time a project comes forward and it's been pushed into the objective review standards rather than the subjective process as it is now. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Terry, thanks for speaking. Others? Any comments on the objective design guidelines? Betty, welcome.
I printed those out just so we could kind of go along together. Betty Winholz-
Thank you.
And I waited to do my comments until after I saw your comments in the staff report. I've got mostly red and things I would like deleted. The blue is your intent, you know, that we're, the idea here is to keep an area's unique character and sense of place, respects existing neighborhood compatibility and privacy. And I want to assure you that putting in mixed-use designs of whatever kind is not going to enhance an area. It's going to make it look big and bulky, and so I would like the end of that sentence, and ensures a high-quality living environment. I don't, I don't think you can do that, and I don't think we want to do that, and it's not a truth, and so I'd like to see it taken out. The other thing I'd like to see taken out is under B, applicability. I said this before, and I'm going to keep saying it, that Senate Bill 35 does not apply to us. If and when 423 gets passed, then it will apply to us. So as much as I'm asking for changes to this bill or this standard, I'm not in favor of it. But if you're going to pass it, these are the changes I'd like to see, and I think it needs to be correct that this does not apply to us, and therefore Senate Bill 35 projects needs to be taken out. I just want to have the assurance that under number six, when it says by right, that you're talking about only those state mandates, not local projects. I didn't know where in here that said that, so I'm asking, where is that? Under letter D, where it says if there is conflicts, that they're going to go with the less restrictive design standard. In all our other documents, it says the most restrictive, and so I'm concerned about why that word less is in there instead of more. And under letter E, I'm, I don't know why, see, this is really a bugaboo for me because you haven't done the downtown designs yet, and this is so going to impact that. And I, that really makes me nervous, and I don't think this should be passed yet until we know what the downtown design's going to look like, because these are going to come into conflict. And so that makes me nervous, and that's what E is about. Down on D and E at the bottom of your first page, it talks about enhanced paving for building entrances and other standards. If we're trying to provide low-income housing, why are you adding things that makes the project cost more? So I think those fancy kind of things, D and E could be eliminated, and that goes for the 1A on the next page. It's about amenities, you know, why do we need water fountains? Why do we need little fancy things? Same with under landscaping, the pedestrian walkways. You know, again, it talks about landscaping between doors. I don't know that any of you went down and talked or looked at the low-income housing, the apartment buildings on South Main Street. They don't have any of these things, and yet they're livable, they're doable, they're not ugly, and so I don't think we need to ask for fancy when we're trying to get low income. I'll just rush through the end of this building design. This sticks out to me because this is what happened on the low-income housing on 41 and Sunset. Okay, just off of Main Street. That huge, big corner with that big cornice thing sticking out there. I don't know what that's about. Maybe that's cool in a big city. That's not Morro Bay. So all this red stuff, I think, you know, and just in terms of number seven, flat roofs and parapets, I live in a house that's flat-roofed. I don't have six inches up. If I did, I wouldn't be able to rake off my roof from the leaves. So I'm not sure why that's there. You can't see the stuff on top anyways from the street because it's of the angle, so I don't know why that six inches is in there. And this thing about the windows came up, I think, at the last meeting. I think Mr. Meyer talked about that. Is that necessary? Is that, again, more costly? Thank you, and thanks for the extra time.
Oh, Betty, thank you very much. No one wants to speak. Ray, do we have anybody in the queue?
Thank you, Chair Rochan. There are currently no raised hands in the queue.
With that, I will close public comment. So Commissioners, let's decide how we want to go about this. I'm wondering, Eric, you've prepared a list, so I'm thinking that what we do is just, we go page by page, and each one of us gets to speak specifically to the items in the presented version, which have all the changes highlighted. And Joe, would you mind taking Betty's letter and address it as we move through this? Would you, would you be her surrogate?
Okay. If I can.
Okay. If you're not happy, just wave. Let's start. Nancy, Scott, do you have any comments? Randy, is that okay, the way we're going to go through it?
I think that's fine. That seems like that'll get us through the process. That's what we're doing.
Okay, let's start at the beginning. Commissioners, do you have your copy?
Just to be clear, we're looking at the redline draft.
The redline draft. Can we, Nancy, put that on the screen?
This could be funky, but I'm not sure how.
Eric, you're going to make sure you flag us as we go through. And Commissioners, anything you want to add? I've got a few markups, so I'll add them as I go through.
I just, while we're all sitting here waiting, I'm just going to bring something up that was in my mind. I've noticed in other jurisdictions that above and beyond the objective design standards, the objective design standards allude to standards within the other city documents, i.e.
This does too.
Do we?
This does too.
And so essentially, all the objective standards within all of the city's documents are included within those objective design standards that approve a project. Am I correct?
Randy, give us a summation on that, please.
Oh, that was a blanket statement that all objective standards are included in there, but we think that is, the intent was to identify the standards that were already objective and not recreate them, but to reference them.
You need to restate that. Your microphone's off, I think. Maybe you need to restate that for the-
Sorry about that. I'm usually known for yelling loud enough. That was a blanket statement that I don't want to agree to, but the goal was to identify the objective standards within your design guidelines and your ordinances right now that would apply to this and reference those directly instead of generating a larger document.
Has anything that's part of the zoning code in terms of guidelines been excluded?
This is Kimmy. If I could cut in, Randy's right, we tried to reference your new zoning code as much as possible and make it as similar to the standards that are in the residential zoning districts chapter. I don't think there was anything very substantial in terms of topics that we left out that the zoning code then addresses, if that makes sense.
So Kimmy, as we move through this, would you help us point out when we get to that reference where it includes the larger zoning code?
Sure.
Can I ask a clarification question?
Please, Michael.
Only because I did talk to a senior planner from Los Gatos yesterday for a half an hour to discuss objective design standards, but to ask Kimmy and Randy, this concept of objective didn't just come out of the woodwork yesterday, right? I mean, objective's been there a long time. I mean, they got sued many years ago because their standard, one standard, wasn't quite objective enough. So in other words, you know, we've been shooting for objective for as long as we've been planners. Is that true or not true? And now they formalize it in a more formal basis by legislating, right? Putting it in a state law. Is that true or untrue? In other words, cities have been trying to shoot for this for a long time, objectivity when it comes to planning and design. Is that true or not?
Yeah. Commissioner Rodriguez, that's true. I think you've been in planning long enough to know that planners like to sometimes just call the same thing a new name. But certainly, there are many things that you've abided by in your code for many, many years that are objective. Things like height requirements, setback requirements are the easiest ones that we're able to point to, but many things about the design review process are not, and so that's what the state intent is trying to get at, if I understand it correctly. But I hope that helps. And we did provide, we did provide some just supplementary material about cities who have run into this issue and run into legal trouble because of it, if that's what you're referring to.
Let's be clear, there is a definition to objective. Would you, Randy, can you give me that?
I don't know that we have it in here or not, but in simple terms, it's a measurable standard which is not subject to opinion or conjecture.
Wasn't there something that if a guideline reduced the size of a project, was that a condition? In other words, if a guideline makes a project have less units, does that then make it subject to concern?
I don't believe that would be the case. You could write that objectively.
A further clarification for Randy. It says, "Standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniform, verifiable by reference to an external or uniform benchmark or criterion available and unknown by both the developer or development applicant or proponent of the public official." So this is right out of the code, per Los Gatos's objective. So I mean, what's frustrating for me is that every city's trying to do this. I mean, just like they're trying to put together their housing elements. In the Bay Area, only 20% of the cities have put together their housing elements and gotten them approved. Now everybody's trying to do objective design standards, and everybody's writing them differently. Some do it well, some don't. So it's very frustrating when you don't even have the language in front of us. It's right here in Los Gatos. So, you know, it gets, depending on how the process works, you can get good results or you don't, and you can get your public involved more or you don't. So I'm just kind of frustrated that everybody's trying to do this as we're doing it. So there's no benchmark, but everybody's doing it, or they're trying to do it.
I think the issue that Chair Rochan was raising is some of the legislation that's pushing housing forward says, yep, you can, you have to have, you can apply objective design standards, but you can't apply objective design standards that reduce the number of overall units. So some of the legislation does say that, and I think maybe that's what you were referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And the only other thing is that you can't, it's very difficult to objectify everything, objectivefy everything. So that's kind of what we're doing. There's a new term that's being created called objectify your standards, or your standards, have they been objectified? So, you know, it's just something we're all trying to do, and we'll talk about it later, what I found out in my research.
Do you have any, any point with that? In other words, is there a reaction?
No, just that it's very hard to get, Commissioner Meyer showed us this at the last meeting. He tried to write objective standards for us for like an hour and a half or two hours, right? They were just coming out.
Got it.
He was trying to objectify our standards.
Let's get into it. First page. Any comments?
I would just say, relative to Betty's notes, that on her comment about it ensures a high-quality living environment should be removed. It has been removed in the new draft. The new draft has dramatically changed the introduction.
The new draft has dramatically changed the introduction, so it's kind of difficult actually to sumify really briefly. But I think it assesses, or it resolves about 70% of what you were talking about, not 100.
Other comments on page one?
No.
Could we go to page two? Page two lists Senate Bill 35. To Betty's point, it's likely this will be included in the future, but it's not now. How, staff, how would you like to handle this? Kimmy or Randy?
I would defer to staff.
Yeah, so I mean, SB 35 doesn't apply in Morro Bay because of the transit requirement, transit stop requirement. So if you would like, it could be deleted, or it could stay here. I mean, I don't...
If it doesn't apply, isn't there a clarity by deleting it?
I mean, we came back and put all these in here, but this is not the only things they apply to. Literally, there's several housing bills that are going to likely get passed at the end of this year that aren't going to be on here, and they're going to, and we would still be using objective design standards, assuming we get them adopted, to apply to those bills. So it's, I think we just added these in here and tried to provide some explanation of what's in them, you know, based on, you know, the desire of the planning commission so that people knew what we were doing, to better explain, you know, the situations that we run into related to the housing bill. So it's kind of up to you. I think, I didn't think it was necessary in the beginning to list all of these in the first place, so.
Asia?
Yeah, I mean, we could easily just add language that says, "For example, but the following, but not limited to..."
I would prefer that, only because I think there's a relevancy here.
Which shows state legislative language that you can find across all of these bills that have been passed. If it's more of a description of, "For example, but not limited to..." One solution.
Joe?
Yeah, I think it was my comment that, because we were sort of forging ahead in unexplored territory here, that we shouldn't devise anything that isn't yet required. But I have a feeling that this Bill 35 doesn't really affect the substance of what we're doing today. It's not like we're tailoring our work to comply with any single law or a variety of them. It's really, that's really irrelevant.
Right.
That's well said, Commissioner Rafia. I agree with what he just said.
What do you want to do?
I think Asia's comment solves that to some degree, using the laws like, you know, sort of thing.
I think that was good. And that's actually reflective of why we put this in here, based on the commentary from the planning commission. So I think that aligns.
All right, Asia, so we're going to adopt your language. Commissioners, shake your heads, yes or no?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's keep going. Page two, anything else? Page three?
On page three, I have, just a note at the end, number three, where it says, hold on a second, Assembly Bill 2111 projects blah, 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 blah. At the end of that little paragraph, it states, "If the following conditions..." I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong paragraph. A paragraph two, Senate Bill 330 projects, et cetera, et cetera. At the end of that paragraph, it talks about eligible products must meet, the projects must meet the following conditions, but then there's no conditions. And so I think, are those conditions the conditions below item three? I don't think so. It's a separate set of conditions that aren't yet included. So we need to include those conditions there, whatever they are. Is that clear?
Randy, do you see what we're asking?
Yeah. This is Kimmy. That's clear. I think it was an honest mistake that that text got left out.
I just, I think it just fell away.
Okay, so we will add that, then?
So a question here, Kimmy, is there text to be added there, or should that just be deleted, that last sentence?
I think it should be deleted, but I would like to double-check with the state legislation.
Okay.
Because our original document didn't have a list, and so if it was, I don't know what was deleted, if it was deleted.
I think we're just deleting the sentence, but, which is why I asked Kimmy that.
Commissioners, are we okay with that? We don't need to...
We're happy to check.
...to opine. We can leave that up to staff?
Yes.
Okay. Page four. We're looking at Assembly Bill 2162, Senate Bill 6.
I don't have anything until page six.
Okay, let's jump to page six, then. What do you have?
My question there is a question I asked before, but I'm going to ask it again, just because I forgot. Is there any, what's the reason we don't have any requirement for Level 2 chargers for electric vehicles? That's taken care of somewhere else in the code? Is, or did we, for some reason, decide to leave Level 2 chargers out of this?
Yeah, California Energy Code is...
So we're on page six, Scott?
That to occur in projects of size where it would be appropriate. So it is already, the building code is taken.
All right, that's the answer. Thank you. That's what I was wanting, I remember that now. Then I would, I'm on page nine, my next comment.
Do we have any, we're still on page six?
You're jumping too far.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Does Betty have a point, or are you, Joe?
So that's actually on page eight.
Okay.
Even though it's the same thing.
I did, I do have one question that's probably on page six. So let me pick this up. And I don't know who this is for, Kimmy or Randy or staff. We talked about a review of the ministerial projects at Planning Commission. Where does that, where is that in the document?
So I'll let Scott answer after this. We took all those comments and the discussion that the commissioners had and forwarded them on to the city attorney. Unfortunately, drafting that kind of procedural language and application forms and requirements and materials all sat outside of the scope that we had to do work with the city. So my understanding is that all of those comments will be forwarded on to the city attorney, worked with city council to make sure that your wishes are addressed in whatever process ends up being adopted by the city.
Do we know what's being forwarded to the attorney?
We're actually going to have the attorney do, after the planning commission's done, a full review, for a number of reasons. You know, one of them being some things have been added that are sort of extra stuff, and we want to make sure that those extras that have been added on to these are okay and not contrary to state law, so. We're doing that. And then we'll have language that provides the piece. So this is a question I should ask for clarification on, thank you. I had mentioned this to you offline, but not in front of the commission, so let's get this concurrence from the commission. I was going to add language in there that has the commission performing the ministerial review, unless you defer to staff to do that. Like, the planning commission can make the choice, because you'll literally be doing checkboxes, because that's kind of how it works, so.
That was in the public hearing last time. We talked about that.
We did. I just didn't really have concurrence from you, and I wanted to make sure it was okay that I put the other piece in there. Like, it would be up to the planning commission whether you were doing it or not, but if you wanted to defer it to staff, then you could make that decision.
Can I ask a clarification, Scott and Randy and maybe Kimmy? This also came up, a question. Could an applicant, a developer, ask for more of a review? In other words, versus, right, an applicant actually can say, "I want the planning commission to see it."
I have no idea why an applicant would do that. But being a planner for, you know, 27 years, that's unlikely scenario.
It happens in Los Gatos.
But certainly, a project can go through the regular review process that would go to planning commission. Or if they're submitting an application in compliance or to be found underneath one of the state regulations to move your project forward more quickly, then they're going to want the objective design standard review and whatever that looks like. If it's going to be the planning commission doing it, then you'll sit up here and go through that process, you know, with a staff report from staff, and you'll do that. And then if not, then...
And I guess this was more of a high-level clarification. So just because we have objective design standards doesn't mean an applicant can't say, "Well, I want a more of a, you know, I want the planning commission to see it."
So you would see, you would see an application going through the normal sort of planning commission process if they wanted, say, modifications, exceptions, variances, things like that. So special considerations for their project, they would be going through a regular planning commission process and not necessarily the, you know, a process that involves objective design.
So there's no reason to add that language? Agreed?
Yeah.
But wait, so Scott's saying that we had agreed on the planning commission being the reviewers of the checklist.
Right, I'm not, yeah.
So we can defer, you're saying...
He's adding the language that we have the option of deferring. My problem is, how do we know to defer?
I will, I will ask you.
But in what's, what, how, in what situation?
So you recall the context of the conversation, at least on my end, was you'll do a few of these, and it may not be something you like doing on the dais. It literally is going to be going through a checklist, and I don't know how much you're going to like doing that. I think it might be interesting to do it once or twice, and I think after that, it may be a lot less interesting. So it really gives the option, if you end up still wanting to do all of them, then that's the way we'll do it, but...
I think that the value here is in projects that the public has a lot of opinions on and a lot of eyes on, that we do it in a public forum, going through the checklist with the public.
That's how I saw that.
Yeah, whereas like most projects could go through staff and could be deferred to staff, but those, where we're hearing the public say, "We want to, we don't want this to be one staff person making the decision," then it can be done in a public space.
So I think the option should reside with us, and I guess I would make it as expected in the document that ministerially, it'll come before the commission. And if we would elect not to, there's no reason why we couldn't do it. I don't know if we need language in there to say that, Scott?
I'm happy to put language in there that says, "The ministerial review will be conducted by the planning commission unless otherwise directed to staff." I don't think there's an issue. I'm going to run that language by the...
So where is that going to show up? Because the question is, that's now under attorney review.
I don't exactly know exactly where it's going to be there, but it will be in there.
So how do we approve this tonight if we don't kind of know the full...
All you have to do is give me direction to make the change. If you're comfortable with the direction, I will make sure that it's in there. If it's not in there, it'll be because there's a legal reason why, and I'll have to report that out to the city council, because it'll be something you directed me to do, and I'm going to go city council. The planning commission said, "Go do this." The city attorney said, "We can't for X, Y reason." And the city attorney will be sitting there and can answer the...
And will you respond back to us with the ins?
I will 100% let you know.
Okay. Commissioners, are we all shaking our heads, yes? Oh, no. Joe?
This ministerial review strikes me as something that's probably not well-suited for the kind of environment and decision-making we make here every two weeks. I mean, I wasn't contemplating something like that. I was contemplating something like perhaps one or more of us might be in a ministerial body that would sit at a desk and review these complicated filings. And those members of the planning commission would be well-suited to, sort of in a timely fashion, tell us whether the guidelines were working well or whether they had resulted in some sort of aberration.
So you might want to remember that the number of projects that would meet these requirements are probably 0.7 per year, you know?
And I guess I would add, this review can be, just we shake our heads and say, "We've read it, no questions." It's not like we have to go through it point by point. We would get the objective submittal upfront, and we could look at it. So I'm saying it doesn't have to be this long tedious process.
Well, but who, but who, who has looked at it in detail?
Staff.
They've looked at it before us? I don't, it's not on here.
You're going to get, you're going to get our review of it in your hand when you conduct the review.
And we're, this is just a, in a way, confirmation of what staff's saying, and it's at our discretion. And in a project, like as Asia describes, that's an issue, we might actually exercise that. And if we would disagree with staff, we could make a case.
All right, I stand corrected, because that's not what I thought I was hearing. I thought that we were going to be looking at it literally for the first time.
Staff will help.
In my mind, this is a way to allow the public to see the project and understand, or be more carefully describe the project. I'm not speaking very clearly, but just, and also the idea that the state is controlling what we're doing, it's not the city, so that there's no blame game coming down and people understand what's happening more, I think, in an old form.
It creates a transparency and a public record, so I'd like to keep it in.
And just even better clarification, only because we're, it's so fresh in our minds, we had a project two weeks ago. Right, remember Alessandro, 1140 Alessandro with the five units? Remember mixed use, right? Here we go. We're actually doing it now. So would that have, how would you have processed that?
That one wouldn't...
That would not qualify.
That wouldn't qualify.
All right, so that's what I'm saying, so that would just go through a regular review process. Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Commissioners, we're shaking our heads, yes?
Yep.
Yes? Okay. We're moving on. I think we can go to page eight. Anybody disagree?
It's nodding your head, yes, and it's shaking your head, no.
Always nodding.
It's like going, "No."
Well...
Thank you, Eric, I think.
My next comment is on page nine.
Oh, wait, Betty has on page eight.
Help me out here if you see, because I'm confused.
C3.
C3.
On page eight. So Betty's comment, C3, is, you see on page eight? Oh, no, sorry, we addressed that one.
It's really C4. It's loading and service area, top of page eight.
Thank you.
Yeah. And what's the recommended change?
This is too difficult.
Oh, that one is just a question asking for further examples or explanation. So no recommended change specifically, but more clarity wanted for the loading.
I don't have a problem with that one, just to be clear.
I think I'm okay with it, too. It's pretty clear. I do have one under 4.5, avoid vehicle light intrusion. I thought we should add in there that this, and I want to make sure that I'm right on this, this would also be a consideration for the neighboring residential buildings. In other words, the implication is not just for the buildings of the project and on-site. That's 4.5, avoid vehicle light intrusion.
Oh, okay.
It's just five. It's five.
Got it, okay. So what was the, I'm sorry, Chair Roche, and...
I just wanted to make clear that we're avoiding vehicle light intrusion into the existing or the new residential units, but also the neighboring residential units.
So we're requesting an edit here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just neighboring residential units added after residential spaces, maybe.
Okay.
Commissioners, are we nodding?
Does that seem good? Okay.
We're nodding.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on page eight? Page nine, please, Scott? I had a question. Rooftop decks, just real quick, are they, how do they count as open space? Is that, is there a certain standard you have to meet, or are there certain restrictions?
The new code, we...
It just has to be accessible to the residents in the building.
Is there any reason, though, why you couldn't do a rooftop? Because of privacy, height?
I mean, it has to meet the standards, the objective design standards.
Yeah, but you can do them, yes.
Yeah.
Right. And I just, I'm wondering if this is encouraging rooftops. I guess that would be my question.
We get, you know, we get a lot of applications for rooftop decks.
Yes.
Spend a lot of time, like using on single family homes. Spend a lot of time, like using on single family homes. We spend a lot of time sort of massaging those so they don't intrude upon the neighbors, and they're, you know, pushed into the center of the roof and stuff. And so this, this is meant to do some of those things, so.
I guess my concern is rooftops are touchy up here, for good reason. And I'm just wondering what guidelines we're applying to that.
I, I think this was added as a result of the commission's.
Yeah. So the 15 feet away is the only, only thing, Eric? Are we still good?
I would, I would suggest if we're going to be really objective, to eliminate rooftop common areas.
Can you do that?
I mean, so, well, you could prohibit them, certainly. But I mean, when you're dealing with multifamily or mixed-use projects, they have limited opportunity for outdoor space. I mean, I would be reluctant to do that, just because of, I mean, I'm just thinking about what I would think. If I lived in a place, I would want to have some outdoor space, and our ordinance requires that some, the only place you might be able to put it might be on the roof. But I, I think we're trying to be sensitive to not infringe upon the neighboring properties, and that's where this language came from.
Okay, I'm convinced. Are we nodding? Okay.
I can see both sides of that one, because I have seen, you know, some of these affordable housing projects are lot line to lot line, and there is only the roof.
Asia, do you have anything?
Well, just to address Betty's concern for, I believe, amenity types, she mentioned in her public comment about, are we making affordable housing more expensive? And I understand the concern, but I think that a lot of these amenity types are really common to affordable housing developments and necessary for, or at least some of them are necessary for good family housing. And so I don't know if there's anything in here that addresses, like, addresses this in a way that can.
Yeah, on that subject of low-income housing, I, I would think from a commonsensical approach, I would be hard pressed to believe that an agency would come to us.
Your microphone, sorry.
Sorry. I would be hard pressed to believe that an agency who wanted to build affordable housing would come to us and not avail themselves of a conceptual presentation, knowing full well that we might so value the possibility of low, low-income housing, that we would be willing to make concessions. I, it'd be hard for me to believe that some sort of a housing agency would simply go by crossing off the boxes and be done with it, which, and if I'm correct, then that reduces the incentive to sort of sacrifice exterior architectural details for the sake of that one-in-a-thousand low-income project.
I guess I, I would add, I would respond to Betty's comment that I really do believe affordable housing needs to be as good as any other kind of housing. And so there are certain minimum standards, and these are just looking to do that. I don't see, you know, again, as an architect, I don't see things that are adding extreme costs to this. I think the costs are modest. So I guess I'm comfortable. That would be my best advice.
So if I could just interject, this is one of the paragraphs that you, you wanted to, us to point out, where it refers you back to the zoning code.
Yes.
Because zoning code has this requirement. So this is just clarifying language for a zoning code requirement that also applies to this project. And it doesn't mean that they have to do all of these things, but they have to meet the common space requirement.
Right. And I think Betty was referring to even larger things. She was talking about like decorative paving and stuff like that. And I think some of that we've already taken out, by the way. I have one on 2.1. Oh, you want to keep going, Joe?
Landscaping, the, the business of landscaping on only one flank.
Landscaping is page, page 10. Do you want to go there?
No, 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 we're not done with nine.
Joe, what do you got, Eric?
So on page nine, common and private open space, which is E1B letter I, that is, it states south slash west facing. And in our previous conversations, I specifically referred to south or east facing because in Morro Bay, the wind comes from the west and the west.
So you want to change west to say east?
No. My comment is below. I think actually we should take that a step further, rather than, because after our discussions last time, we came to conclusions that it's almost impossible to always put something in the spot you want it to be. What we really don't want is to have common outdoor space on the north side, because that's always shaded. But if we had to have it on the north side, it would be okay as long as it's outside of the shadow line, I would say the winter shadow line of buildings. So my comment would be to, to have the standard state that common space should only, should, common space should not be within the winter shadow line of a building on the north side of said building. Essentially, that's an area nobody ever goes. If, you only go on the south, the west, or the east side of your building. You never hang out on the cold north shadow side.
Staff, Randy, Kimmy, any comment?
We're getting into form-based code there, I know.
I was going to comment that you just nailed a really good form-based code example. Yeah. Yeah, that works.
Would you agree?
Commissioners, are we nodding? No.
Again, I'm, I'm.
Are you shaking?
Minutely bothered by the prospect of that physically not being available for that particular project.
So even if it is available, for instance, there's so many building projects in San Francisco or anywhere else where they've done these giant lovely outdoor spaces on the north side of the building, and nobody ever goes there despite all best intent. They all sit on the curb on the other side of the building where it's sunny, and the taxi cab runs over their toes. And I, I fear the same here. I have no desire to see a lot of money spent on a space that would never get, ever used.
Okay. But, you know, I, I accept that, because this, this, and should a problem arise, this might be one of the first examples of where we decide, for whatever reason, we have to amend it. But fine, let's, let's, I would say go with that.
Are we nodding?
Yeah.
Okay.
And as a point of clarification there, that we struggled with the same issue. That is why that, that section is written such that it is, they must utilize one of these three methods. So that, we found all of them a satisfactory way to approach common.
I think that works.
So I'm just trying to eliminate that south or west facing comment.
Absolutely.
And replace it with this, nothing on the north side, inside the shadow line.
So wait a second, what are we doing?
Could you repeat it one more time?
So like, I guess I'll ask a question more specifically. You just said we were trying to eliminate the south or west facing comment in BI?
I, I don't think we need to clarify. I think we, east is fine, too, as far as I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
The, the, the one I don't like is the north, and I don't think anybody likes the north.
Well, we'll do the, we're just adding the text. We're not deleting anything, then. We are?
Replacing, I believe.
Yeah, you, where you state the common space is located in, sorry, my, I'm not, I'm not reading very well here. I have three different pieces of paper I'm trying to find. Item E1B, lowercase i, says, begins south slash west facing, and that right there is the first fail in my mind. We want to get rid of that. And in some way, and I don't care how, state that we don't want open space in the, in the shadow line of the building, on the north side of the building, that anywhere else is okay, is what I'm trying to say.
Got it.
Rather inarticulately.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're, we're good now. I, I, I get it. For whatever reason, I wasn't tracking, but I am now.
On that same page, item two, private open space, I discussed this last time. If you go 2A and 2B, and 2A, it says screening with structural elements, a private open space may be screened, and I want to change the word may to shall.
So it's intentionally may because it's not required. In both places here where it says may, it says that they may do that, but they're not required to. And later, when it says if you're in view of the public on the public sidewalk, then you are required to screen.
And expanding on that, that section says that these opens, they shall be screened with one of the following. So.
But either one of the following have an option of may. And so neither one of them are enforceable.
There's an implied or there based on the, the first part of the sentence, that you may do this, or you may do that. But, but one of them's required. But I mean, that's, I think that's a language thing. We want to turn that to shall, as long as the option still exists for one or the other. It seems reasonable.
Yeah, I think, I don't see how shall hurts it. Let me put it that way.
No, not at all.
Okay. Are we nodding?
Not a hill.
In both cases, on both A and B, the word may should be placed.
Anything else on nine?
No.
Can we go to 10, Scott?
Yep.
Does anybody have something on 10?
No.
Yes.
Okay, Asia?
I think F4, we had discussed having landscaping be required just on one side, and I wanted to request that, that one side be separating traffic from the walkway, if possible. Or I wanted to hear your thoughts on why we wouldn't do that. So if we're requiring landscaping next to a pedestrian walkway, let's require it to split the traffic from the walkway, or to block or to separate the traffic from the walkway.
I guess the only reason I would maybe question that is, the main issue is not one of safety. I think it's one of shade.
I, well, can I make it an issue of safety?
Yeah, please. If that's, if we think it is.
I, I'm seeing it in a new way, having listened to what you just said. The intent on my part was that the location of the walkway might want to be adjacent to a building, which would then preclude it from having landscape between the building and the walkway, perhaps. But I wasn't thinking about the idea of a pathway out in the middle of nowhere with only landscape on one side, and nothing on the other side except cars. And that's, that's a good point.
Before we're done with this, let me add one other thing. I'm always concerned when I see 15-gallon trees, that kind of thing. Is there any language, and I'm asking staff and consultants, that we could talk about shade rather than tree size? In other words, the point would be to get a certain amount of shade, which is a sustainable and microclimate issue?
I think that was the wording for the original comment that was deleted in exchange for this.
Oh, yeah. We didn't like that?
Um, this is Kimmy. Yeah, we, we started out, you can see number one on that page has been struck out. We, we took another pass at it. We thought a, a size of a tree was going to be easier to, to measure.
Oh, I see.
And to confirm than what area of your walkway is shaded or not. That would require a little bit more, maybe calculus on staff's end. But that was the intent there, but.
And, well, there's been, it was, a point was made to me also that the figure 17.31.020 on page 11 is different than what we're describing in the language on page 10. Page 11 describes the pedestrian walkways flanked on both sides with landscaping, whereas page 10 says something completely different. And so.
So it's a conflict.
You are correct, sir. That needs to be changed.
Okay.
So, so going back to.
The percentage and then your, your question. There's two, there's two hanging things. Do we like the idea of, of going back to the percentage rather than the tree size? And do we want to adjust to Asia's? How would that be stated? Because that doesn't always work. I'm wondering how you could require that.
So I also want to bring up.
Maybe that's an option?
Before you go too much farther, that's the shade thing. Having lived in Morro Bay my whole, you know, most of my life, Morro Bay isn't hot, and shade is desirable to some degree. And so when we come up with a percentage of, we are.
It's not hot this year.
It's, it's, it's something, just a determination should be probably, no, no more than 50% would be my suggestion.
Well, it's only 25% right now, though.
Okay, there's.
It might be getting hotter.
It was, it was 25%.
Yeah. I guess I'm saying go back to that.
I'll put the 25% back.
I'm misunderstanding where you were going. I'm sorry.
Okay. Are we, we're good with the 20?
Are we nodding on that one?
Yeah, that's what.
Oh, Joe?
My question with respect to the pedestrian walkways, with the plain meaning of the words, pedestrian walkways shall be flanked on one side with landscaping. How, for, for, for a developer interested in cutting costs where he can, how is that to be interpreted? Is anything but, I need only plant landscape on one side of the walkway?
I would like to add, I would say, on at least one side, not to.
Same thing, though. I, I'm trying to avoid an aberration where we have a walkway linking buildings, and obviously he would, he would put something and wouldn't leave a dirt patch, but he would skimp on one side and plant thoroughly on the other side by the plain meaning of these words.
Give us a suggestion.
See, I thought, Eric, your original intent was not to have unnecessary and duplicated trees. I got that, which would take up a lot of space. But I, I wouldn't want to incentivize what I've just.
Yeah, it was more about the trees. You're absolutely right than it was about landscaping.
Yeah, so I, I.
Okay, somebody make a suggestion. What do you want to do?
Well, this doesn't accomplish what you want to do, and it leaves us vulnerable to something we clearly don't want.
I'm open to ideas.
What, 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 what instigated your original comment? Maybe we could go back to.
The idea was that you only have so much extra square footage that's not built. And if you're going to require trees on both sides of walkways, that the walkway was in right down the middle of an open space and disallowing a, a little playground or a little bit of lawn or someplace for a person to sit, because the walkway's smack through the middle of the, the space, as opposed to off to one side, which was my intent.
So clearly we want to, something explicit that says we're not requiring you to plant trees on either side of the walkway. But we would certainly.
That's the intent of, of what we're trying to suggest, yes, and.
Can somebody suggest some language?
I believe that staff and the consultants get the gist of what we're trying to say here. And I would say that they could probably interpret our conversation and come up with language.
Yeah, I, I mean, I could see that one being split into two. You, it seems like there's two issues here. One being the walkway, and maybe that does go back to two sides. I'd like some input on, on that. And then a separate item five that speaks to trees as they relate to the walkways.
That works.
Yeah. I, I think that's how you do it. Landscaping on both sides with trees can either be on one side or both side at the discretion of the.
Nodding or shaking? Nodding?
Wait, so this is saying, we're going back to the still two sides, just doesn't require trees on both sides?
Correct.
And so that will leave room for there still has, there will still be a space between the street and the pathway that is somehow landscaped.
I think this is not a public sidewalk. This is a private.
This is something on site.
Pedestrian walkway on the site, on the property.
Yeah.
That isn't, doesn't border like parking lots or driveways or?
It might, but.
It might.
It could. I mean, I, yeah, it could.
Yeah, so, but it sounds like it would be both sites either way.
Yes. Under this new adjustment, both sides.
Okay, thanks.
Are we good on page 10? Can we go to page 11? Thank you, Scott. Joe?
I, I'm in complete agreement with Eric, although we came to the conclusion independently, that with respect to that provision that talks about form, massing facade articulation on all four sides of the building, that may not be as, as objective and specific as we'd like, but it's absolutely essential, because I've seen too many projects where that's one of the primary deficiencies, was not enough detail, particularly on the sides. So even though it's not explicit, objective.
You're talking about the original.
Yes.
17.31.030, A3, four-sided architecture.
Yeah.
Has been arbitrarily left out.
We do ourselves a real disservice by, by omitting that.
We need to just put that back in.
What are we talking about?
I don't know. Was that left out for a reason? I don't remember us discussing taking that out.
You're talking about the, we're talking 1731.030?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question. I had the same question. Why was that struck?
Okay.
Yeah, this is Kimmy. I can speak to that. We went through the draft and looking at some of our standards, which require, you know, some sort of emphasis, architectural feature, extra architectural features, for a facade that faces the street, or for a facade that contains an entrance. With those additional features, we thought that that standard would conflict with this four-sided architecture standard to make everything consist, exactly consistent on all four sides. So that's something. So that's something we found just from our work in other jurisdictions where this is kind of a standard that seems to butt up against a lot of other ones. And that's why it came out. But you're correct, it was not an explicit recommendation by the commission or just us taking the chance to clean something up since we saw it.
Joe?
Again, I don't claim any expertise in this, but I'm certainly not advocating that we duplicate on the sides in the rear of the building what we put on the front. But this provision suggests that there has to be some attention to giving some articulation to those other facades.
The intent being to get rid of the sort of back-of-house plainness and only architectures on the facade of the three facade.
One facade of stucco, and that's it, yeah.
I think the, I think it's helpful. I guess I would, I'm nodding to keep it in. Commissioners? Are we good?
Yes.
Kimmy, do you hear the recommendation?
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else on page 12? Can we go to page 13?
I have a point. We covered the four-sided architecture, which is actually on page 13, too. But the, page 13, bear with me, too many pieces of paper. Massing, which is number two, massing, letter B, upper floor cantilever. Now, I neglected to, last time we spoke, this was talking about where I was asking for a two-foot encroachment into the front or street-side setbacks. In other words, the city's right-of-way if the applicant was producing a larger open space area on a second story for the inhabitant of the structure. And I neglected to add in a very important point, in my opinion, and that is what I'll call the trigger for allowing this two-foot encroachment. I don't just want a two-foot deep porch where there wouldn't have been one before. I want them only to be allowed this extra two feet if the porch is a minimum, or the deck, uncovered deck, rather, is a minimum of five feet by eight feet.
So we would add that language?
Sorry, yes.
Two feet if?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Six feet by eight feet. Uncovered decks, a minimum of six feet by eight feet, shall be allowed to cantilever and protrude into the applicable front setback or public right-of-way.
Scott and Nancy, do you have that, or do we need to go again?
I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, sorry.
Okay, can we go again? Just say the language in the insert?
Yeah, I'll just, if you, at the beginning of what you've already written, in front of "shall", it just says, "uncovered decks, a minimum of six feet deep and eight feet wide, shall be allowed to cantilever and protrude into the applicable front setback or public right-of-way, provided there is a minimum 12 feet." And I think you should add the word "vertical clearance." That's what my comments are in my notes there.
I got it. Thank you.
Page 13, down here.
Kimmy, I gave you guys notes on this, or maybe staff has forwarded those to you. I'm not certain.
You got it, Kimmy?
Yes, and just to add, I don't know if this helps, but later on in the section, we do have a little bit about porch requirements needing to be six by eight feet in dimension. That's on page 15 in the top half. We can add uncovered decks to that as well.
The, this one is actually protruding into the right-of-way, whereas the porches are not protruding into the right-of-way. And so I don't think you want a porch protruding the right-of-way because it's at ground level. You need it to be up above the pedestrian right-of-way. That's why it only works on the second floor.
Are we good?
This exception is not for side or rear setbacks. It's only for the front, street-side setback. And the intent is essentially to grant a bit more usable public airspace to a development in order to give its residents slightly larger outdoor spaces.
Would that be understood by code, Scott, Nancy? Or do we need to add what Eric just said?
No, I don't think we need to add that. I mean, it allows it, it's fine.
It's been done in other jurisdictions. It's not, you know-
I have another one on page 13. I'm enassing A double I. All other locations, the third floor and floors above, shall have a maximum floor area that is 80% of the ground floor area. I think we need to reduce that by 10% so that it would be 90, 80, and then this would then go to 70 if it went to another story. That would be my recommendation. This was the attempt to have a form-based zoning applicable to a boxy building. Commissioners, are you with me on this?
You're saying a fourth floor would be 70% of?
Right. A third floor or higher. It says, "all other locations, the third floor and floors above shall have 70%," I'm saying. So it'd be reduced one more time.
I have no problem. I'd actually want to get more.
Scott, you good?
Yep.
I mean, what are the implications of that for housing?
It does have implications, but that's what the form-based zoning does. It's a way to, they can manage it. In other words, it doesn't tell them where to do it, but it reduces the mass.
And because of the density bonus, a fourth floor might be a possibility?
Yes. Are we good, or we want to, Asia?
I mean, I would hesitate to reduce it, but if you guys are all in agreement, then-
It's a two-edged sword. You can take that one depending on-
Right.
The perspective, either way, and that's sort of a-
So we're nodding, so we're going to go to 70 rather than 80 in that? My other question is also, at the top of this page, page 13, we took out that whole top section.
No, some of it got added back in later.
Oh, it did?
The only thing that didn't go back in was the four-sided architecture. The rest of it, to some degree or in some different form, appears to have been added back in, in my read. It's just hard-
I'm looking at this, Eric. Is that back in?
Look at the next, look at the next page, sorry.
Okay, all right. Kimmy, is that right? You just relocated it?
Yes, yeah. It was-
Sorry.
Us trying to reorganize it a bit with all the new suggestions added in.
It actually became much more-
We're good.
Objective, except for the fourth-
We're nodding. Page 14, any issues?
Okay, I wasn't here for half the meeting, so I probably missed why mansard roofs are prohibited. I know that the notes say because they're-
Because we could!
Horribly. I was just wondering if there is a reason not to do that, but we don't, I don't-
But what about Paris?
Yeah, but when I Googled mansard roofs, I was like, "why would they prohibit these?" But I guess, old buildings, old.
I think that was Terry's point, that do you really want to take out a tool?
I mean, I'm no fan of mansard roofs myself, but excluding them seems to so underscore, you know, the private likes and dislikes.
Eric, this is your defense.
Yeah. Turning a subjective feeling into an objective comment is difficult. And so I'm gonna, if you guys vote a certain way, that's your prerogative.
I mean, I don't-
That doesn't sound Socratic, but let's, um...
I don't really care either way. I just wanted to know why, like, would we rather-
I vote for putting it back in, and I'm nodding. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, we have one shake, four nods.
Or mansards in or out?
In.
We're gonna blame all of them on you, Terry.
I do have a question. Betty's six inches taller than all roof equipment on parapets. Joe, I think you had a question on this, too?
Yeah. You know, it's hard for me to imagine a roof structure that didn't have infrastructure that needed concealing and therefore a parapet, but I suppose it's possible to have a roof structure that didn't need to conceal something. And likewise, I like that sort of international, modern style of architecture as a possibility. And that seemed to be precluded if you had to do a parapet every time. So I would just confine it to parapets, when necessary, to obscure the infrastructure on a roof.
Or you could say something to the effect of "roof infrastructure should be concealed."
Yeah.
I think it could be that simple, yeah. Are we good with that?
And then eliminate, because I was also, last time we chatted, wanting to see a flat roof as an option.
You were.
And this would allow that. So I would say if you eliminate the six-inch parapet minimum or whatever, I think it's six inches right now, isn't it? And left it with something as simple as roofing slash air conditioning slash mechanical, you know, devices need to be concealed.
Scott, are you good?
Something along those lines.
This is Kimmy. I'd just like to mention, we found the six inches. While it might not be perfect and it might not work for every single type of building, it is much easier to measure for a staff person reviewing this type of project. Saying something needs to be concealed, actually, we run into this in the kind of landscaping and screening sections as well. Is putting something behind a tree concealing it? Is it incorporating it into the architecture? Is it painting it the same color or something? That's why the height measurement is there, to try to make this a little easier.
I actually tend to agree with Kimmy on this one, to my own-
Yeah, because I'm also thinking to conceal could easily be taking an air conditioning unit on a flat roof and putting a four-foot fence that's six feet by six feet in-
Yeah.
And that's not at all what we would have.
And then you have to define what the concealing stuff is. Okay, so what's the recommendation, commissioners?
I think we should leave it alone.
Okay. We're nodding. Anything else on 14? Can we move to page 15? Our target is 7:30. We've got seven minutes.
I think the comment on, it's the enhanced paving for building entrances. There was a comment made by the public there, and I think that there's some confusing in there also. Number one, I would add stained concrete, where it says painted concrete, painted or stained. That's a relatively inexpensive solution that should be accommodated, although concrete, I think maybe, I may be adding words that don't need to be added. Does concrete include stained concrete? I don't know. But by putting it in there, the applicant knows it's allowed. And then the last, the last word there was, it says, "concrete pavers, brick, stone, flagstone, tile, and ceramic." I think that's just a mistake made because I suspect that was meant to be ceramic tile. And I would say that you don't need to include ceramic because there's all other types of tile as well. It doesn't have to be ceramic tiles. I would just pull the word ceramic out of there.
We're nodding.
And then-
Do we just stop at tile?
Yeah, yeah, ended at tile. Just add "and tile."
What else you got, Eric?
That's it. I do have a- No, never mind. I've figured it out.
Anybody else on 15? Joe, we good? 16, Scott?
This is a big one for me. This is where we were discussing, I'm gonna, it's down on, let's see, what's my? 17.31.040, additional mixed-use standards, item B. I'd like to add at the beginning, "in order to retain the small-scale building character of Morro Bay, the ground floor height of commercial portions of mixed-use projects shall be a maximum of 11 feet." The intent there being to retain, it's not the intent to punish any residential scale. The intent is to be, to just keep the commercial portions from overwhelming the standards that we see in Morro Bay, the historical typology, let's call it, of these small-scale buildings. Typically in this town have been small. We don't want to develop that sort of-
But did you mean to say measured floor to ceiling?
That's what, was it staff had said that already in there? That I would just, that's the way they were measuring it. That's the way they said-
Because then above the ceiling, you could have a four-foot structure and plenty of- ceiling, mostly hung.
Okay, then, then however you want to restate that.
The reason we were arguing last time is I was going a floor-to-floor number.
Got it. How would you restate it?
You need more than 11 feet, so I guess I'd say 12 feet, floor-to-floor.
Okay. That would concur with the 12-foot on the second-story overhangs, to the second-story deck projection.
Are we nodding?
This is Kimmy. Nancy or Scott, can you just confirm that's consistent with how you measure floor height in other parts of the code? Before we write it that way?
It's measured finished floor elevation to finished floor elevation.
Okay.
That's how we have it shown on our-
It's not a technique.
The reason I'm putting that in, that addition of the small scale of Morro Bay is because I believe that there may be some, there has been some suggestions that entities might like that lower height limit. And we would need to make it stand upon some other, you know, documentation within our code, preserving the character, etc.
It's objective now, the addition of the language. While it does tell a story, it might be appropriate in other areas of the zoning code. It's, in my opinion, probably unnecessary here. It's more objective the better, you know?
I suspect that, well, the reason I put it in there now is because I suspect that going forward, when we do our downtown design guidelines, this subject is going to come up again. And then we'll be in conformance between multiple parts of our code.
I'd say let's include it.
So what's it, give us the language again, so I didn't write it down?
It's written in red ink, right there on a piece of paper I gave you.
Okay, okay, got it.
And you, but we're adding 12 feet, right?
Yep, but you changed it.
Changed to 12 feet, yes.
Anything else on?
Floor-to-floor.
Floor-to-floor. Page 16, anything else, commissioners? "I see the light at the end of the tunnel." 17? Anything?
I'm done.
Joe?
I missed something here on, under the-
We can go back.
Under landscaping, F4, and I-
Mike?
Oh, yeah.
It's fine.
It is. Plant select, under the original version, "plant selection and landscape screening container size shall be selected to achieve at 50% of its height within three years of installation." And I believe that that's omitted in the, omitted in the more recent version. And it was originally in there to ensure that landscaping, you know, makes itself felt relatively quickly.
They were deferred to the city's street tree list and to the, I believe. Am I correct there, Kimmy?
Can you make, can you say the reference number again? But yes, in the document's landscaping section, we do refer to the street tree list.
17.31.040, additional mixed-use standards, number, well, sorry, sorry, sorry. Run the wrong one. Which one are you on, Joe?
Well, okay, on the, on the current, the latest version, let's see, it's 31.020 F landscaping, or, under landscaping. Follow that?
Okay.
It's item three on the red line.
Oh, I'm, that was, I'm sorry, I'm kidding.
It's the deleted last sentence.
That was the previous version of this. In the current version, there is no reference to 50% of its height within three years. I'm just thinking that would be a good idea to reinstate that, to make sure that we have landscaping that develops quickly, that's all.
What are we saying? What's the language?
I would, I would like to, well, let me-
I think it came out because it was discussion by the commission about enforcement and that there was nobody that was going around with their 50% measure. And so it was suggested it be taken out.
Well, that may in fact be true, but it doesn't actually justify, I mean, the lack of city funds and personnel doesn't really justify not having a regulation that-
It was in here originally.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
You want to put it back in?
I would like to put it back in, yes.
Couple of nods would be...
We're nodding.
All right, thank you.
Still trying to catch up.
It's 7:31.
See if I can find it in, God.
Yeah, I know. It's just not in this very chat.
See if I can find out where it should be. It's, okay, so in, in landscaping, F4, in the current version, where it says, place a maximum of 30 feet apart from center. You see that, Eric? You see landscaping? The very, the very last thing, pedestrian walkways. Originally, there was a reference to, to 50% of its height within three years, and that had been omitted.
Okay, so we're, we're nodding.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion. Yeah, really.
Do we have that, Scott?
We're good.
Nancy?
Yeah, we got it back.
I think we are done. Does anybody have any final comments on the pages and the red lines? What I'd like to do at this point is take a very short break, less than five minutes, and then we'll come back and we'll vote on this summation. It is now 7:32. We'll be back in less than five minutes. Commissioners, we are back in session. Let's go through and have final comments, and then we will vote on what we've done. Mike, would you like to start?
Yeah, let me start, only because I was on Sunday morning at around 4 o'clock downloading a major city's design guidelines, and then at 4:30, I downloaded another city's objective design standards. I just, this has just been eating me up. I mean, this is not an easy decision, but it's important for the city of Morro Bay. So let me make my comments here. During my 32 years as a civil servant and my volunteer work serving on various boards and commissions, including serving on planning commission for both cities of Santa Clara and Morro Bay, I have gained valuable experience as a professional planner. Working for the Public Utilities Commission, I served as the legislative liaison in leading the efforts to deregulate California's electric utility markets, AB 1890, 1996. Governor Wilson signed the legislation, and the California voters ultimately approved a ballot initiative. So everybody was on board with electric deregulation. You know what happened with that? Okay. In 2004, I was hired by the Santa Clara Valley Water Districts to primarily work in the area of planning, enhancing, and expanding water supply for the Silicon Valley region, the, you know, the ultimate region to be in, by the way. In fact, Governor Schwarzenegger came to our HQ campus in San Jose in 2009 to announce an $11.1 billion bond measure for California. The bond measure was ultimately approved by California voters. You know what happened? Nothing's been built, no new nap, no new capacity has been developed in California for water. I served on Caltrain Citizen Advisory Committee to promote train service from San Francisco to San Jose, and ultimately Gilroy. Also worked on the Citizen Working Group to plan and expand the barrier rapid transit from the Bay Area throughout the Silicon Valley region. Now that got done. We got that done because it was more of a local effort. Don't leave it up to the state of California, or else you'll, you'll find out what happens, you'll all live with it. So I brought some articles with me that it's the real deal, but we're at a real crossroads regarding housing in California. And basically, where we're at right now is the fact that the governor and the legislature through new laws and directives from the state housing agency are leaning hard on local governments, particularly cities, to make more land available for housing and eliminate zoning, design criterion, setbacks, parking requirements. They don't want any parking, they want more houses. Remember, we got into a discussion last meeting, parking really doesn't matter when it comes to housing. And other local rules that impede construction in cities. And it says, unable to muster enough support against the legislation, critics of the state's build now, quote, "a policy," are now looking at a constitutional amendment to gain, regain local authority. So in other words, the locals are going to say, we want our, our authority back. There is a concept called federalism. You know, the fed states do something this way, and the states say, no, we're going to do it our way. Well, the locals can do the same thing, right? There's not something that allows, that prevents them from doing that. So that's where we're at now, so there will be a, maybe an initiative that leads to local control in the area of housing again. But something else is happening. We're losing our population in the state of California. When I was working on these initiatives at state level, we were going to California to be 60 million people. We were going to be 60 million people. That was my objective, to do that. We're now forecasted to probably flatline till 2060 and end up at 39.51 million people in 2060. Why is that happening? Well, you know, I won't get into the gist of it, but that's what's really going on here. And in fact, last year, I looked at the local, San Luis Obispo only grew at about 1,000 people last year. You can, you know, I looked it up, right, because I think it's important. So what's happening in San Luis Obispo? We're growing by 1,000 people a year. So what's going to happen with housing? Not a lot, we'll just put it that way. And in fact, a couple weeks ago, they wanted to do a project so badly in the city of Alameda, or the county of Alameda, that the governor actually signed one-time legislation to build housing in Alameda. That's how this works, right? If you want something bad enough, go to the governor, maybe he'll sign the legislation because what's happening or what's there already doesn't work. So the irony is, they've got all these tools, all these laws they're writing, but nothing's getting done unless you really go to where you need to get it to. Now, we've got cities that want to, especially like the city of San Jose, who wants to build their own power utility because they can't hook up their new developments with power. Here we go again, I'm getting back to my, what I was trying to do with power. We haven't created the capacity. What happens in the hot summer months? Shut off your air conditioners, and don't plug in your EVs, by the way. And what happens in drought years? Don't use water, you're either going to use, do mandatory or voluntary conservation, depending on how bad the water situation is. So that's about it.
So Mike, where are we, where are we going with this?
Well, I'm going to finish up now. I just want to give you a history of how the state does things. The state says, 20 years ago, when I was working on it, let's grow this to be a 60 million people state. Didn't think about housing, though, at that time. We were just trying to build the infrastructure to get it there. Now the state's pushing for all this housing, so basically, if we had gotten to 43 million people, we would have left 3 more million people than we have today without electricity and water. So I want to make this closing comment. There is a direct correlation and relation between housing, energy, and water in California. During hot weather months, Californians have experienced blackouts and brownouts due to lack of energy supply. And during droughts, voluntary mandatory water conservation mandates have become the norm due to the lack of water supply. Now, the current legislation is looking at making ADUs saleable as condos. In other words, you can sell your ADU as a condo. That's currently in this session. Remember, we were talking about ADUs? Well, they may allow them to be sold as condos. What's that going to do to the housing numbers? Right now, the housing numbers, there are 20, 20,000 fewer units of housing in California per year because of ADUs. So if they allow ADUs to be sold as condos, that'll be 100,000. So what, what I'm saying is, the state sometimes writes so much legislation, it doesn't realize it's cutting into each other, and it's not being productive. So I'll just say that I don't think, based upon what we're looking at in Morro Bay, that it's absolutely necessary that we adopt objective design standards, because what we have works for Morro Bay. And it is not required by law that we do adopt them. Now, if we don't, we can be challenged. A developer can say, I've got objective design standards, and you don't have them on your, on your books, right? So I'm going to challenge you. What would happen at that point is they take us to court, we may lose, but in the process, we may negotiate an agreement to get that one unit that may come forward, that one development that may come forward in five to 10 years, maybe, maybe, if it ever happens. San Jose has not adopted a housing element, and they are building like crazy. They don't care about housing elements and objective design standards. Why do we? That's, why do we? That's all I'm trying to say. San Jose's getting away with it, and we're not. And by the way, I gave you a copy of San Jose's design guidelines, which don't require objective design standards. You've got a copy, Randy. And I gave you a city or town of Los Gatos's guidelines that do require objective design standards. So these are towns in the same county within 10 miles of each other. One does it, one doesn't. One does it, one doesn't do it. So what's the impact? Virtually nothing. They're both doing business and building homes.
So give us an outcome. How does that help us?
The outcome would be that I would not support us adopting standards because of the way we do things in Morro Bay. It's not required. We may be lucky to see a project that challenges us on these grounds. We have a housing element, which is a good thing. They're just getting so deep in what we're doing in the business of locals that it's being counterproductive. So that's my argument. Working for the government for 50 years, the state's being too aggressive and pushing housing.
So let me go around, and can we...
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody wants to pick up Mike's point?
Yeah.
Joe?
Well, in part, I'll respond. I don't think we do well to underestimate the coercive force of lawsuits, particularly in a small community like this with a constrained city budget, and, you know, and the prospects of some very well-heeled development companies from the north and the south. I also think that these objective guidelines, of course, they're designed to encourage, encourage development principally by reducing delay. And I think, for the most part, in most parts of the state, it's necessary, certainly in the large municipal areas. I'm less convinced that it's necessary here in Morro Bay, but nevertheless, I think it'd be wise to have something in view of the state legislature, and again, the coercive effect of lawsuits. But what I'd like the people watching or in attendance is to understand that I think a number of us on this board have a certain skepticism about how perfect objective guidelines can ever be, certainly when they're first enacted, and that we will be paying very close attention to how they roll out in reality, and what some of the unintended consequences might be, and how quickly we can amend them to improve them and get the kind of consequences that we want, as opposed to the simple, plain meaning of the words.
Asia. And you can address a larger issue if you'd like, or do you want to stay with Mike's issue?
I think that this is a tool, a moral-based toolbox, to have a semblance of control to some degree in light of a lot of these pieces of legislation, and I'm going to keep it at that.
Would you say a little more?
Yeah. Yeah, so kind of going off of what Joe said about maybe having these standards will encourage some development in town. I don't know how to not make that personal, because I've been, I've said this before, I've been trying to buy a house here for years. Anywhere on the Central Coast, it's a horrible time to do it. There is not a variety of housing here that allows me to do that. And I would love to stay in the county that I'm from, and in order for that to happen, in my opinion, we need to incentivize development. And I know that we want to have some, some amount of control over that, and so this is like a forced tool for us to use, in my opinion. Yeah.
Eric?
My only comment would be, to your point, is that cities like San Jose, in their zoning code, their zoning code is hundreds of pages longer than our zoning code, and so eking out or pulling out objective standards from within the existing zoning code is probably possible there, and thus, they don't have a separate system, perhaps? I'm just guessing. But, and I think that, as has been pointed out in these meetings before, a lot of these housing bills don't really apply, several of them don't apply to Morro Bay, but that doesn't mean that in the near future, more will, and just getting ahead of that game, I think, is what we're trying to do to some degree here. And I may not like it, as you've seen, I don't like a lot of the stuff we've been doing on these objective design guidelines, but that doesn't mean I want to just throw everything to the wind and let the developer determine what gets built. So I'll be voting to push this forward, and with that, I have a motion, if it's, if you're ready, Mr. Chair.
And with that, I have a motion if you're ready, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to have a word first. First, Mike, thank you. I think the elephant in the room is big. And I think there's a reason the elephant is in the room. And that is that many of our communities, as Asia suggests, have been so no growth that it's almost impossible to find that middle ground. I'm not happy that this is the way it comes out. As an architect and a planner, this is the exact opposite of what I want to see. On the other hand, if there is no solidarity in a community, there has to be a path. And I just don't know how else you do it. I think this is a very bad tool, myself. And I'm not happy with the idea that guidelines have to be so objective that they become I still think that there's, I don't see an alternative. And I think that a lot of our communities in California have brought us to this point. I mean, I see it from both sides.
Yeah.
So I'm ready to pass it and I'm ready for a motion. Would you like to respond?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of responses. The fact that California's not growing because of local communities, okay? California's not growing because of local community action. California's not growing because of actions at the state of California level, at the highest levels, okay? That's what's happening. So we're going to flatline for the next 20 years. So 40 million will be the number unless things change. And in fact, I got to town today and picked up the paper, because I like to pick up the paper. SLO County ranks in California top 10 most expensive places to finance a home today. I don't want to read this stuff every time I pick up the paper. I've got 50 articles here that I pick up every day. There's something about housing. All I'm saying is until we get it right and give it back to the people like developers without putting them, you know, some kind of, you know, tying their hands or the locals, you know, you won't have. I even asked the question, where's the support from the state of California to do all this for the locals? Very little support. It's kind of like what the feds do with the states. They say, we want you to do all these things, but we're not going to fund it. So what the state's doing is saying, do all these things with housing, but we're not going to fund it. Just do it. So Asia, it's not going to happen unless we get the support that we need from the people who are writing these laws 40 every year, 40 new housing bills every year. And they're cutting into each other and de-motivating construction, de-motivating developers. So stop. What I'm saying, stop doing that at the state level where the law starts and let the locals take the control back at the county and local level. That's it for me. I'm just saying, flatline, it's not our fault, it's the state's fault.
Mike, again, thank you. I think it's...
Well, I'm working for the state for 20 years and then working at the local level for 30 years really helps you understand, perspective-wise, who's doing what.
I do hear what you're saying. I'm not sure what to do with it, to be honest.
Yeah.
I think that developed nations around the world are all incurring the same situation with population stagnation to some degree. Many, many nations in the developed world are seeing the populations diminish. And so I don't know that, you're entirely correct. I'm not disagreeing, per se. I'm just saying that it's a larger situation than specifically California.
Yeah, but state by state, some states are growing and some states are shrinking. We know, you know, without getting political, state by states, things are happening. So it's not a national, nation by nation. Let's keep it at the state level. Thank you.
So Randy, I've always said this is not your ordinary planning commission, but...
But we do our work, okay?
I think that was valuable.
Okay, I have a motion.
Yeah.
Thank you, Eric.
I would move to approve the updated objective design standards as chapter 17.31 of the 2022 zoning code to city council, finding that no further environmental review is required pursuant to state sequel guidelines, section 15162, with the understanding that the city attorney needs to review the draft for consistency with state law.
We have a motion, staff? Any comment on that?
I think it works for me. I have all the directions.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Get away from that, Mike.
Would you poll the commission?
Commissioner Engraffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rodriguez?
I'm going to abstain and submit my one-page-written comments, which take no position, by the way. I never took a position. I was just taking the information that was gathering. So I'll just abstain. No, abstain. I'm just going to abstain. I'm not going to vote on this one. Period.
I got you, Mike.
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Here.
Well, that was fun.
Yeah.
Let's see, I want to get through the rest of the agenda. This went longer than we hoped, but it was worthwhile.
I bet. Thank you.
Kimmy, Randy, thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Nancy, you're leaving. Oh, thank you. New business. I do have something. I'll be as quick as I can. Scott, we've talked in the past about agendizing a number of items. And I just wanted to put them in the record tonight so we can get them down in the, on paper. We have asked for an update, an information session on state housing law. And I think we're still interested in agendizing that.
Yeah.
B, we've talked about agendizing with Public Works, the walk, curb, and gutter deferment issue. And we'd like to become current on what the numbers are and possible discussion about how we might better manage that from the planning perspective. C, Eric had suggested a discussion around art review. And I'm not putting this down in any order. D, we discussed live-work and work-live, which is, in my mind, in my experience, it's a difficult and vague concept. And I'd like to talk about it to see how we could give it better clarity and how it might apply or not apply here in Morro Bay. Finally, last week, we also talked about talking about inclusive, how should I say this, affordable standard, inclusive housing...
Inclusionary housing?
Inclusionary housing requirements. And what we want to do is not, the concern was, we don't want to make that discussion happen during a project or on a project, but in anticipation of how the project might be considered. So this could be a more of a policy discussion, but maybe we would have someone here who's good at affordable housing who might like to visit us and talk about it.
I can bring somebody from Silicon Valley where we, that does affordable housing full time.
I think it would be fantastic. And I was going to say we should agendize a special party for Nancy, but she left.
Oh, is her birthday today?
No, she's leaving.
Is it her birthday?
No, she's leaving.
Anything else on that agendizing list, commissioners?
You might be able to tie together a couple of those into one. It would seem like the housing law as well as affordable housing discussions could be one session.
You know, that's already happening and it's more about scheduling, I think. Terry? Thanks. Okay, so...
And the other one was the downtown design district. I don't know where that's at, but, and the, what is ours? Joe, what is ours? The community benefits. I think timing, you know.
So would you tell me on community benefits, what are you thinking? An update?
Well, Sean did ask us when we were going to move again. Sean Green asked.
Where are we on that, Scott?
When are we?
We're out at least a couple of meetings at this point with the zoning code coming back and that type of thing. So we'll probably, you know, bring it back after that. It's sitting ready, pretty much ready to go, but in light of the length of the meetings, you know, I don't want to give you an agenda that's going to keep you here till 11 o'clock at night. That doesn't seem...
Okay, so let's do a target date on both the historic ordinances we discussed earlier and a target date for community benefit.
Sounds good.
Okay. Unfinished business, commissioners? Planning comments, commissioner comments, future agenda items, community development directors' comments?
I'd like to let you all know you're off the hook for the next meeting. We'll be canceling the next planning commission meeting. And then, again, we'll be coming back at the first meeting in September, which is the 5th, I believe. And we'll have the zoning code edits that are coming back, you know, from our, from the review from the coastal commission. Some cleanup edits will be associated with that. And we have some edits to the sign ordinance as well. And then there'll be, there's going to be an expansion of a hotel on that agenda as well. So you'll have a full agenda. The project will come first, followed by the zoning code. And then we anticipate probably at least two meetings with the planning commission on the zoning code update items. And so we'll see where that goes. I don't have anything beyond that, though. Thank you. And thank you for tonight. Appreciate the work on the objective design standards.
And Chair, I just want to, one more time, I just want to recognize again Mayor Martin from Poseroblas, who unexpectedly passed away yesterday, who served his community like a great ancestor. You know, we're going to get to the good ancestor. He was a great ancestor.
Thank you again for that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Bill?
I just wanted a clarification. The reason your next meeting is canceled is because of the joint meeting? Or are you just flat-out canceling another meeting when you could be handling some of these things you don't seem to have time for?
Scott, a response?
We're canceling the meeting based on how the items are coming forward right now for the future meetings. So we'll set up for starting the review again of the zoning code on the first meeting in September.
So the joint meeting still is on?
Oh, for, sorry. The joint meeting is on, I'm sorry, that's a good one. The joint meeting is on September 26th. And I think I misspoke there. We're canceling the next meeting, which is the September 5th meeting. And so the next meeting that we'll be in here with will be the September 19th meeting. So I apologize for misstating the date.
Bill?
But isn't there a meeting on...
Well, the joint meeting is council meeting day, Bill.
Got it.
The joint meeting is on September 26th between the planning commission and the city council. It'll take place, that is a city council regular meeting date.
That's right.
And so you'll be having that early, so it'll probably start...
So the meeting that's being canceled is September 5th?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I misstated that. I apologize for that.
Which is right after Labor Day as well.
Yeah, which is right after Labor Day.
Commissioners, do I have, oh, any final words?
I was just remembering, we were talking about having some discussion sometime in the future about some of those historically significant leaseholds on Embarcadero that are up for lease.
Oh, that's right. Scott, we were looking at that, you were going to get back to us on the request for proposal, I think it is.
Yeah, and...
It's the old Wibbly side, I think.
Yeah, yeah. I'm still waiting to get information back from our harbor department.
Could you give us a rough map about how we might plug these in over the next, over the fall?
Happy to take a look at, you know, moving to future meetings.
Again, commissioners, Terry asked me to get a motion to adjourn.
Bill moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Good night.
Why is this working?